Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do I have any public comment? No public comment, okay. Let's, J D for the engineer update.
Good afternoon, J D King, Page County Engineer. An extraordinary fall day today and in, you know, the whole week here. According to forecast, the engineer update went out late, later last night. The blades are out, mostly on the dirts getting ready for the harvest. We were continuing to clean up the stockpiles. I noticed them out yesterday on the north one. They're by the curve on C Avenue, south of two. Pipe crews on M Avenue doing several pipes there. Spray patchers at the west end of the county on the route they call Sleepy Hollow. We are mowing on the pavements with one of our side mowers and the weed commissioner spraying trees in brush. They're working on the bat wing at the shop that a cylinder was leaking, so that'll be ready to go for our mowing up in the fall. One of our tandems doing Omaha. The sign truck that we ordered a year and a half ago is scheduled to be built on the eighth, so it should be delivered in mid, mid-September then from Alpeck down to St. Joe. Soon we'll be starting with our winter services on the tandems, you know, check tires for tread, change oils, just service up. Winter is coming sooner or later. Later's fine. We still have a pickup at Short waiting on parts. And got a couple quotes in on the mower tractors and waiting on one more.
Okay.
Work at the Essex Bridge has been completed. We're just waiting on the vegetation to green up more and we're going to schedule that deck sealing here in a couple of weeks. Get it ready for closeout. The last bridge funding grant that we sent in, candidate for, we did not make the cut. We've got some guys doing the pipe work, surveying, surveying the pipes that are there now so we can design new pipes. I got a guy doing inventory of the culverts. Project development continues on various projects and next week I'll have a, be a resolution come in from the R P A. It's about Page County being a sponsor for trail work on the Wabash. It'll just be passed through money and none of our monies will be involved, but it has to be a governmental sponsor. The, the trail couldn't sponsor itself. And also sent, not listed on the engineers update, but I did take a call from Carol Miller, lives down on Summer Street in Chan, across the road from, from Johnson Run. She's concerned about the trees and brush growing along there. I told her it was in the board supervisor's purview, shared with Fremont County Board. And there's a lovely show out on.
And I believe that within the city of Shenandoah, the city kind of takes care of it, Todd. So do you want to, would you want to talk to her and to them?
Yeah, I could talk to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay, did everybody got that email?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for me?
Um, I had something. What was it? Oh, the, the grant that we didn't get, was that the Redwood Avenue?
No, that's the Stanton.
That's the Stanton one, okay.
Stanton Road Bridge.
Okay.
We're, uh, we're still on track for the Redwood Bridge.
You got any update for, are they coming Thursday, right?
Well, that's what they told me last.
But you haven't heard anything?
I haven't heard anything today either way.
And that's just, that's just a temporary fix?
Well, it'll be, I mean.
What are we talking about?
Um, J 52.
We're patching on J 52.
Oh, patching.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Some, uh, potholes to develop from wind turbine traffic.
Oh, okay.
And, and we're gonna, I mean, it's, 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 hopefully we'll cover it up someday, but it's patching, just like we do patching on J 64.
Okay.
And it needs to be, it needs to be concrete because
Yeah.
our asphalt did not hold up.
Okay. And somebody was on the road to Essex from Highway 2 and there were no lines? Is that right?
Correct. We haven't, we haven't striped that yet.
Okay.
We're waiting for the, the new slickness or the shininess to go away a little bit so this paint sticks better.
Okay.
But we'll paint it this fall.
Okay, all kinds of things.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, our next thing up on the agenda is discuss an action on the abatement request from the Shenandoah Pregnancy and Resource Center. Yes?
Hi, good afternoon, Supervisors Clark, Mayor, and Rogers. Thank you for your time. My name is Kathy Langley and I have been a Page County resident for 28 years. I am also the board chair and one of the founders of the Shenandoah Pregnancy and Resource Center. Recently, we were made aware that our 2024 property tax exemption form was filed five days late in February of 2024. This would have occurred a week or so after our open house in our new facility, which was still under construction. The bill for property taxes due totals $4,277 for half the year. Shenandoah Pregnancy and Resource Center is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization which offers compassionate hope and help to those facing pregnancy decisions and parenting needs. Since we opened in 2021 at a rented facility at the time, Spark has helped over 160 families. All of our services are free and currently include non-diagnostic ultrasounds, pregnancy tests, non-therapeutic counseling, diapers, wipes, clothing, classes, including infant CPR, baby items such as cribs, high chairs and strollers, and much more. If they need it, we do our best to provide it. As you can imagine, we strive to be good stewards of every dollar hour donors and supporters and trust to us. Unfortunately, in the frenzy of our January 2024 open house and working to complete our building for our July grand opening, this paperwork for the tax exempt property status fell through the cracks. Our executive director who handles these things would be here herself to explain, but she is currently at a pregnancy center conference in Ohio. I believe you all received an email from her, Angela Bentley. When Spark purchased the property from the town of Shenandoah, I was under the understanding that all of our tax exempt filing was complete. Clearly, I was mistaken and that is on me. I assure you, we are terribly sorry for the untimely filing of our property tax paperwork and want to make it clear that this was not done on purpose. Another board member was going to attend with me because we feel very strongly about this and he just called me and could not make it. But we're here today to ask for your consideration of the abatement of these property taxes so we can use that money to directly assist the residents of Page County and Page County's neighbors. Whatever questions you have, I'd be more than happy to field them.
Um, our assessor is here and we did ask about when the paperwork was sent out to you and did you say that was sent to them in October?
Yeah, 10/4/23. So we sent it out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you told me January. So you.
We received it in January. Or, or we received it in January, but it was sent out on the yacht.
Okay, so change all that. She told me five days late. It was like five months late.
Yeah.
Well, no, no. We were just a few days past the deadline.
Okay.
But it was sent earlier, but, and then just, you know, like you said, when you called, that you found the paperwork at that point, probably have to be another one. So it was passed out by the county.
Probably, probably. We poured the concrete for our facility, thank you for clarifying. We poured the concrete for the facility, I believe it was like the April prior to building. And then that summer, we, in a week, we had a group come in and frame the building for us. So we paid for the supplies and they came and framed it in. We housed them, we fed them. And from then on, we had a shell of a building and we were just feverishly putting up sheet rock and painting and mudding and taping and of course, doing as much as we could do to get the facility up and going. Um, yeah, so I, clearly, the error is ours. Clearly. I was not aware of the situation till I found out the other day. And so really, we're kind of throwing ourselves on the mercy of the courts because we'd hate to, not that the county won't use $4,200 well, but
Right.
we hate to not be able to directly distribute cribs and diapers and wipes and counseling and classes to the, the people who live here in Page County and our neighbors.
And I, I totally understand what you're saying and being the 501(c)(3) and everything. It, it just kind of puts us in a bad position also because we can't abate everybody's taxes,
Of course.
you know, who has an issue. So I will, you know, leave it up to Todd and, and Brian to ask any questions or to make any comments.
Yeah, please, anything. I mean, this is certainly my first venture into this, but any questions you have.
Yeah, I definitely think that, you know, this, being a nonprofit and kind of puts it in a different perspective for me as far as, um, abatement goes on, on the taxes and, I mean, I could see that it, you know, that it's definitely, that it was a mistake and, you know, you guys have owned up to it and, and so the, as far, as much, so I don't, I don't have a problem with the abatement piece of it going forward.
I would just like to hear the rules and regulations like either from assessor or the county attorney or, is there any rules or regulations that you gotta follow or if you're late, you go to jail or what's.
As long as I don't have to do laundry.
So my, my part is would, I accept the application and it's due by this deadline and anything happened, we'll just, we just pass it on past that point. So, I mean, whether it's for a hungsad application or a, you know, charitable nonprofit, so it's just, the deadline's all that we're worried about on our side of it. And then, but this would be taxes for this September and next March, not just the half years where.
Yeah. So what was.
The worry of abating property taxes, I've not, I've not done something like this in this, in this scenario, but as a city attorney, I've approached other boards supervisor to abate that property taxes on like abandoned property that the city I represent has acquired and, and they've always been nice enough to do that since there was an interest on part of the city to rehab that property. And, and so I abated property taxes following years. Hopefully they'd be able to get property taxes on that property once the douches have been abated and they sold a lot.
But now it's a 501(c)(3), it's, it's, will not be paying property taxes.
That's correct. We have improved the neighborhood, if that helps at all. I don't know if you're familiar with the Pregnancy Center, it's a beautiful facility.
And what was the total tax on it for the both?
The whole, let's see, that would be 8,500 and, uh, I'm, I think 54, I'm adding the two half years really quickly.
Okay.
10, 4, 1, 15, 6, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
What's the number?
Yeah, 4,277. So that would be 8, 5, 54? 8, 5, 54?
Yeah, 8, 54.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And again, you know, in retrospect, I am the one who dealt with Milan Sorensen as the lawyer from, from the town. And one of the caveats, if you will, or requirements was that when we purchased these properties from the town, because they had been previous nuisance properties and then they, so once, when we were able to get full possession of those properties when our facility was considered to be built, right? Because evidently in the past, some people would attempt to
Right, yes.
say they were going to do something and it didn't happen. So that was reasonable. So clearly, I should have asked more questions, but this is certainly my first time at this and asking like, so what else do we do? You know?
Right.
You know, I'm sure he thought, well, you're going to do whatever has to be done when it has to be done. So what, what I would want to know is whatever your decision is going forward, what other requirements there would be from us so that this would never be a situation again. But, and it's clearly, as you said, that this is then a full year, then that would be, you can, almost $9,000
Right.
of funds that we wouldn't be able to utilize to give free non-diagnostic ultrasounds, train people in infant CPR, parenting classes, cooking classes, cribs.
And I understand what, I understand everything you're saying, yes. And I'm not trying to be hard.
No, no.
I'm, I'm just trying to state the facts here.
Right, absolutely.
Because that's, that's almost $9,000 that the, that the city, the county, I know it's not just us.
Right.
So it's going to be everybody that's going to be out those taxes.
Absolutely. The good thing is that since there were no tax funds coming into the county and since we are clearly just providing free services for people from the county and neighboring counties, I'm sorry, I don't have.
I don't know what's doing that.
That hopefully that would help in, I mean, I sat on boards before.
Right.
You know, so whatever you decide, you've got to be able to explain that to your constituency.
Exactly.
I can understand that.
Yes.
And we are not arguing for a moment that we were built in error.
No, you've, you've.
You know.
Yeah.
Clearly.
Yeah.
So that, that's a non-issue. Yeah, the question is that, and unfortunately, I mean, we definitely would not want to put you in a difficult situation. However, the situation remains.
Well, you're not the only one, so.
Yeah, well, well, this is the last thing we want to come to
Right.
the county supervisors to talk about. We want to tell you how much we want to offer the county and.
And it's, it's a great deal, yes. You're doing a, a real service.
Yeah, and actually, this last Saturday, we just had our first free non-diagnostic ultrasound Saturday. We've got a beautiful new ultrasound machine, G E, state-of-the-art, and we're really going to be able to, I think, greatly increase those people that we can help to serve, bring them in for that.
Great. Okay, so do we have a?
One more question.
Yes.
Is all 501(c)(3)'s, are they all always exempted? They are, some are, some aren't?
Not necessary. It depends on the, on the use. I mean, just because a 501(c)(3) owns a building, if they lease it out to someone, that would, they would, that would be exempt. So we're going off use, but you don't have to do anything to keep getting it moving forward. Can I answer your question? If you fill it out once and it's done, if you would buy another building or site, then you'd have to fill the exemption off the back.
Okay, very good. Yeah, and we do nothing for profit.
And so on your part, if they did rent it out, then you have to catch it or how does that work?
Yeah, we catch it unless it was brought to our attention.
We report that to you.
Sure, yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay.
And then it would be partially taxable, that portion. We have other properties that are partially exempted and partially taxable depending on the, the situation.
Let's usually decide by the county board of all counties then?
Assessor decides, would decide the status. And then we determine a portion would be, and depending on the situation, we could use square footage here or whatever, so.
Okay.
So what is your?
I mean, I think, I think the work that they do is important and the money is used in our county going to the people of the county, so it's kind of like, you know, collecting it, but not, I mean, so I, I would make the motion that we abate and go ahead and approve the abatement for the, the Pregnancy Center.
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, next we have Jeff Curtis, Samuel's group.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's everybody doing today?
Wait a minute, just a minute. Yes, we're approving, when he did that, I, let's change it, that we're approving resolution 30-2025.
Sorry, yep.
All right.
Sorry, Kristen.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 30-2025.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Everybody's getting their weekly updates. I try to get those out mid-morning on Mondays, sometimes a little bit later, but I try to get them out as soon as I can. Any questions or any issues you see arising from those? Any concerns, thoughts?
No, if you'd just like to label each picture, it'd be, no, just kidding.
It can be done real quick.
Just kidding.
Trust, trust me.
Just kidding. It's, it's fantastic to see the progress.
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything seems to be trending in a good direction. Morale's really good on site, which is really good to have. Overall, safety is good. Our safety director is down, tries to get down at least once a month and it's been typically every two weeks to be on site just to make sure everybody's wearing their P P E, their safety glasses, high vis. I'm not saying everybody does all the time, so there's a nice little report that gets filled out and sent to the trade partners to make sure they're going by those standards. So we continue to move forward with that and we'll work with those trade partners. Ongoing work right now, the masons did pull off site this week for the fact they had a project that they had to get completed, I do believe it was a school. It's not going to affect our overall schedule, which right now with their masonry, we're actually showing ahead of schedule. We're still trending, maintaining a substantial completion about the April-ish with 911 dispatch due to go in June, July of next year. So everything seems to be trending directly with that to date. The plan moving forward, Graphite Group or Graphite's Construction has staff on site right now working on roof blocking. That way we can start getting the building, what we call dried in with Blackhawk Roof. We're looking forward to getting that done, getting the exterior windows sealed up and get the building weather tight so once the masons get down, we can start what we call drying out the building so we can make sure the masonry and the precast has the proper moisture levels for the painting process once we get to that point. So anything we can do to facilitate that is really good. And then of course, we already know the exterior walls are insulated, precast panels, the roof will be insulated, so we'll be able to maintain some decent heat when we go to add temporary heat this fall, this winter and keep all trades moving forward with that. O'Neil continues with some of their underground conduit work prior to stickler concrete, going in to start doing slab-on-grades. The plan is early part of next week to have a, what we call a pre-install meeting with the stickler team, going through their installation process for the slab-on-grades. We have certain areas that, we have a polished concrete, which is a special mix design, which is in front of the architects, make sure it meets all the criteria, when we go to polish it so it looks good. And then all, all the other mix designs are ready to go. And just want to make sure we're comfortable, make sure they're maintaining the proper grade, hitting all the necessary recessed slab areas that we call them for the showers in the jail areas for the safing and on then the tile work that gets put in, that process. So that's ongoing as we keep moving forward. Cunningham team again, HVAC, they're working on core drilling, some of the roof plank where they have vent stacks, roof drains and everything going through, getting out in front of the roofing company. They'll set the roof drains so that way they're able to taper their insulation to where it needs to go. And their underground plumbing, pretty much complete, couple little areas that will get finished up and then just make sure that all the testing is done on that prior to the slab-on-grades being poured, make sure quality control checks are in place, make sure none of the conduit was missed so we don't have to worry about cutting up any concrete. Again, this process is that we want to maintain and continuously go forward with. From there, Mid-American, I want to thank them again, they, we got the pole set, so O'Neil is finishing up the rest of the temporary power coming off that pole into our building and then they'll start working with the integration with the transformer series, transformer from Mid-American. We have started receiving some of our switch, or excuse me, some of our generator components from Cummins. So we're in the process of getting those stored. The main generator is slated to be here first part of December, so that seems to be trending and tracking quite well. Any questions or any concerns?
When, when again would the floor be poured then inside?
I would anticipate you start seeing some of that happen in the next two weeks.
Next two weeks.
The plan will be to start in the 911 dispatch area where we have that recessed floor slab. We put in what's called access flooring, fancy term for, it's a hollow core, it's where we run all the wires and stuff up through, so they have everything into the controls. So we're ready to go there. We also have what's called a walker duct, again, fancy term for basically a trough that has a cover, the rest of that cabling comes through, so that way it's all underground and we don't have to worry some of that seismic build that we had redesigned the building to, so that's all part of that process. I'm surprised nobody's asking me about our, our budget yet.
Yeah, how are we doing on that?
Everything seems to be trending quite well.
Less?
With the, the interest income and a lot of the underground work being completed already, haven't ran into a lot of unforeseen conditions, which lends itself really well. Again, we'll keep monitoring that, pay applications, we typically get in first part of the week. We're working directly with the auditor and the treasurer, making sure that all, all pay applications are in their possession, all the lien releases, we capture all of those. That way we minimize any of the exposure for the county.
And how did the bids come in?
Well, let's jump right into the bids then. We received one fire suppression bid.
I thought we had like four interested.
And after the bids came in, phone calls were made and the infamous seismic build for the dispatch area, everybody's concerned about that except for one contractor, which he's built to it before, he said it's a non-issue with us. So the bid that came in was from Mahoney Fire Sprinkler, they're based out of Omaha. They're currently out of the kitchen project, the correctional facility project. They did submit the necessary bid requirements, the bid bonding, all the targeted stuff was filled out properly, so we did open up their bid. Their bid come in at $238,900. So again, that's 238,900.00. We had budgeted $212,880. So that differential, of course, that's what we have our construction contingency from, we need to pull it from there. I would recommend, if it's okay with the board, to issue that contract. I will do the same thing that we did with the original bids that came in when we started working through the value engineering, issue the contract and then talk directly to them, see if there's any other areas that, hey, if we go with this or if we can redesign this a little bit, because it's essentially a design build, but we'll challenge them to come up with, if there's any other areas of improvement and so then we'll do that like we did before, that deductive change order, reducing their overall contract and putting that funds back into the project. That's how we like to do that.
And what was the original, 212 what?
212, 880.
88, oh, 88?
Yep, so it'd be 212, 880.00.
Oh, 88, zero, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And again, that was a year and a half ago, so
Yeah.
price of steel, everything kind of going up. It's actually, Tony and I were both kind of, we weren't wagering, wagering's not legal, but let's just say we had a friendly discussion about who was going to be closer and of course, Tony was right, I was wrong. I was estimating about the 270 area from what I had seen with steel pricing, so I was pleasantly surprised when we saw this.
And it isn't, it isn't huge.
No.
It's not a huge amount, 26,000.
26,000 more.
Yeah.
Correct.
Not huge, so.
So if you figure typical year and a half difference, when that budget number is originally plugged in, at six and a half percent, that's right, right in the realm of what we, what we're seeing.
Yeah.
I did do a vetting check with the pricing that we had out, for instance, out at the kitchen project, within about 12 cents a square foot. So I came in, I were kind of figuring it would be.
Okay, very good.
So the board's.
Okay, so we need a, we need a motion.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from Mahoney for the fire sprinkler system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so our next steps moving forward will be, we'll get the AIA contract into your court duty via DocuSign, start getting that executed.
Okay.
And then the September payout, you'll see the line item for the fire suppression, bid category 12. bid category twenty-one, that'll be a new line item with this value. And we'll make the adjustments that we need to. And then, like I said, we'll continue with the VE portion with those folks. Once we start the process of contracting, we'll get their certificate of insurance, all the bonding in, into the county's hands. That way, that's all covered contractually. Make sure we have that also covered. And then also their substance suppliers. Typically with them, basically they self-perform everything. So it's just a matter of where they're getting the materials from. And then with that, when they do submit pay applications, we reach out to the vendors to make sure that they've been paid before we release their prior payment, their next payment.
Okay. This is our final bid, right?
Final.
Done.
Final, final.
Just, just build it and they woke up.
Yes, yeah. That's, that's Tony's area, not mine. So hopefully.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't get too many, otherwise we'll be talking later.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Nope?
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay. Our next is John, Mid-American, and I saw John on there. Simon Demwayne last week, too.
Yeah, you sure did. Alrighty, so Jeff, I'm glad that Mid-American was able to be of service. And JD, it's also an extraordinary day over my direction. But we are aware of the J-52 situation. I didn't hear everything that you said about it during this meeting, but I know that Mid-American's aware of it, Mortonston's aware of it, and they're hiring somebody to fix it. Uh, let's see, so as far as updates. Sorry?
Said we're taking, or I've been taking lots of calls on it.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It's good it's taken care of. It's being taken care of. Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So other construction updates, crane pads are mostly complete at the turbine sites in western Page County. There are a couple sites where offload has started, and there's even a couple sites where some of the components offload, it's completed already. I know that we had, I believe it was our first crane crossing is today, might be going on as we speak. I know JD was made aware of that. And I, I'm understanding that there's a good system that Page County has for getting that information out to who needs to hear it. Is that right?
Yes, he sent that out and said it would between, be between three and six today.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think people were notified.
Good deal. Other than that, I know there was a tower rescue training since the last time we all talked. That was the day after the last time I talked to you guys. And both counties, emergency management folks were invited to participate in that. And I think that's about all I got for you guys today. What else? What else do you know? What, what can I help with?
Hey, I was just, just curious, in Shenandoah across from Pella, that is a, gonna be a Mid-American staging or a, what, do you know anything about that building that's going up?
Yeah, I know that we are gonna have a operation, I think, I'm trying to remember what O and M stands for. I think operations and maintenance building. They'll be right across from Pella.
And that, that's for the turbines primarily?
Correct. Yes.
Is that permanent?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes. I, yeah.
And then is it going to have, like, you won't have blades or things coming in there? Any, is it, will it have big equipment coming in there?
I don't think so. I think it's more or less an office.
Okay. All right, well, I, I just had some people ask the questions, so I said I might know a guy that I could ask.
Right. Yeah, well, if I hear differently, I'll let you know. But to the best of my knowledge, just an o- office building.
Okay.
Okay. On that.
Uh, that's right, there were, oh, the equipment guy. I can't even think of his name now.
Hmm, okay.
Anyway.
Any questions, Brian?
Nope.
Guess that's it, John?
Yep.
Alrighty, well, talk to you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is the township, Valley Township clerk and trustee situation. We received a letter. Raymond Dick is retiring from the Valley Township Board of Trustees as the clerk. And he's been, he was a trustee first and a clerk for years and years. Willard Forsyth will be taking the place of Raymond Dick as clerk. And that being said, that leaves Mr. Forsyth, Forsyth's position as a trustee, and David Deoy will be filling the open position as trustee. So I guess we have to take an action on that, don't we? Have to accept them. So if I could have a motion to accept Willard's Forsyth as the Valley Township clerk and David Deoy, I guess you say, as the township trustee for Valley.
Make a motion that, okay, let me find the names.
Forsyth.
Mr. Forsyth is the trustee for Valley Township, and David Deoy will be filling the position of trustee.
Forsyth is the clerk.
Forsyth is clerk, yes.
Yep, okay, a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion is carried. All right, board communication. Kristen stuck this in right here. We've got the SWPC annual meeting and fiftieth anniversary celebration coming up on Thursday, September twenty-fifth. It's in the evening at six o'clock. There's no cost to attend, a meal will be provided. It is in Atlantic, so we need to let them know by the fifteenth of September who's going to attend.
Yeah, I heard yours for you.
You did?
Yeah, because I.
You're on.
Knew about it a long time.
Yeah, I know, and I've seen it too, so. Brian, are you interested in it?
It's on a Thursday.
It's a way to learn about SWPC and SWTA, but it's whatever.
Starts at six?
Starts at six, yes.
All right, should be able to make that.
Put you down, okay. Okay, okay. All right, now, board communication for others.
I have a SWPC meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, no landfill, not right now. Okay, I had a wellness meeting just before this meeting. We went to ISAC last week. Very informational meetings. Todd hurt his back. Anyway, trying to think if there's anything else.
The one thing, I did talk to some people up there at ISAC, that one thing I'd like to, that I might try to send out some more information to everybody first, before we dig too deep into it. But there was some, some talk at a couple of the, at the lunch tables and stuff around some ordinances that some counties are putting in as far as for EV storage, so electric battery storage.
Oh, yes, I did hear them talk about that.
Yep, there's some of that, you know, there's some places that are starting to look for land.
Okay.
To have those storage facilities set up. So it might be in our best interest to get an ordinance in place to think about some of that. And also nuclear rods, some nuclear power rods that they were thinking that they were gonna have to have some storage places for. So that is, for one, the counties had been approached already and by a company that was looking to maybe put in a, a place for those. And, and they showed that it was, they use these great big, kind of like truck containers. And they're basically filled with solution. And they sit out in this field. And basically, they have to set these batteries in the liquid so they don't catch fire or whatever. And so it's, but it does take quite a bit of space. And obviously, some of that's not greatest material to be housing. So I'll, I'll try to, I've, I've been talking to the guy in the other county. And when I get more information, because they're gonna, they're in the process right now of doing some ordinances.
They did talk about it on Friday also.
Oh, they did.
And it's, and a lot of the counties didn't really know anything about it.
Right, so.
And so it's a new, it's a fairly new thing. And it's as far as taxation and all the rest of this stuff. So I think they'll probably be working on that. So I don't.
Yeah, so.
Don't want to jump the gun.
No.
Yeah, we want to start talking about it.
Kind of let them, kind of figure out some stuff first, and then they'll kind of clue us in.
They also talked about mining, I'm trying to think.
Oh, hydrogen.
No.
Nitrogen?
And they, they were talking about that, but they were also talking about what's the, what's Bitcoin.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Bitcoin. And somebody goes, what? And it's like a whole bunch of computers.
Takes a lot of power.
It takes a lot of power and a lot of noise. So there's a lot of new things coming in that we're probably gonna have to be looking at and listening to and seeing what they come up with. I don't know whether, maybe ISAC is gonna be working on something along, along with some of the supervisors. So, yeah. Good point. Okay.
Yeah, I did, and that ni-, I think it was nitrogen.
Nitrogen, I think. I think that was another thing, yeah.
They're drilling for nitrogen to.
Yeah.
As one of the.
Going way deep.
Resources from Iowa that.
Yeah.
New, it was new to me. I was like.
It was all, I mean, especially this mining, mining Bitcoin, they said, you know.
Yeah, no, I've heard, I've heard of, yeah, I've heard of that.
But it takes hundreds of computers and lots of power that it needs, and then very, very noisy from what they were saying. So, yeah. So we need to keep our eyes and our ears open on that one. I think that's, that everything for there. Okay. We'll move on to approving claims.
I'll make a motion, we approve claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And meeting minutes from last week, August twelfth, or a week before, I guess.
Make a motion, we approve the meeting as stated.
Okay, you know, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Seems like I thought of something else, and now I've forgotten it. Oh, well. Okay.
Sir, any, just looking over the financials here, anything we need to be concerned about on the number five line there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'm not sure which one that is, but that's okay.
Sheriff's Department, forty-seven percent.
Well, yeah.
Is that secondary?
And I think, I talked to Kristen about that. I think she's gonna look into that a little bit, just in, when she has time to go over some of that.
That's because of jails and that part of that.
It is.
I'm, I'm hoping.
That's why it is. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's it. I'm not sure how much. Yeah.
Yeah, we probably need to keep.
Yeah, Charles made a comment to me today, but I've been on the phone all afternoon. I have not had a chance to look at it yet.
Look at it and see what's going on.
But I will, and then I'll send you guys an email.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely need to keep an eye on it.
Well, we, we will. It's not gonna.
Only one month into the year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's already fifty percent of his budget.
I think that's, I'm not sure how we, how did we budget for, did we budget the whole amount in there? Yeah, okay, okay. Shoot, there was something else. Oh, taxes. I think in discussing the taxes, the county also got, and, and we mentioned that just before, but we'll discuss it next week, because the county got taxed for the farmland, because we rent part of it out, and for the Shenandoah building, because we rent an office out. So Kristen and I will talk about it and see what we can find amount, find the place to pay for it. So, yeah.
You know what they were, how much?
I, she's gonna send them to you, and I haven't added them up yet.
Yeah, the state auditor said we will need to be paying those.
Yeah.
Because we rent.
Right. Landfill also got a bill because they rent part of the land out there. So, yes. My brain is just fleeting. The other thing, oh, shoot. It's not good, taxes and something else. I guess we'll discuss it next week. I'll remember it by then. Oh, Schneider. I talked to Jason Rennander, our assessor. While I was at ISAC last week, I did talk to Schneider, Beacon Schneider, about our real estate. There are add-ons now. We had talked about earlier last year, I think we talked about adding the graph to the tax statements. They now have some other things, and it's, it's into a bundle. And there's some really cool things on there. And I asked Jason if it was okay if we put it on the agenda and had Sarah, who is the specialist from Schneider, come down and give us a, a little demo. It's a funny thing, Sarah, I knew Sarah from way back because she worked for Schneider. She retired, or she quit in two thousand and eleven, did other things, and then came back in twenty-three, which is the same as what I did. So we were kind of having old home week. Anyway, so we did talk about the per, the package. Montgomery County just bought the package, if you saw KMA the other day. And so there are different things that they can do with it. And Jason has given us his approval that, because he handles that. And he, he was saying that some counties pay it. The assessor doesn't pay all of it. So we could discuss that and see. I would say that pie chart would probably be a county payment for the tax part of it. So anyway, we can discuss that. But if it's okay with you, I'll have Sarah come down and, and we can look at that. So, okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four forty-five. Okay.